Okay. Are there any additional agenda consent calendar items? I'm not aware of any.
Nope.
No?
Uh huh.
Okay. The next section, and this will be of interest to everyone, is public delegations. Now, if you would like to address the board, you may go to the podium, please. Tell us your name and address and write it down on the roster at the podium. And if you could limit yourself to two minutes, that would be appreciated. And so if anyone would like, and we can't, it's not a back and forth, but we will listen to what you have, your concerns, and we will listen to them. And so whoever would like to address the board, feel free to approach the podium.
I'll go up and read the names that we have.
People signed up already?
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Sure.
Great.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the Board of the Selectmen. My name is Alicia Chandler. I live at the Windward Village Apartments in Nyantique on Main Street, and I have been a resident here for six years. I am here today to urge the creation of a fair rent commission in our town. This matter is of critical importance as it directly impacts the lives of people like me who have been affected by the substantial rent increases. Alpha Capital Management bought the Windward Village property in June 2024. They have sent out communications to tenants whose leases have expired or are due to expire soon stating that the rent will increase from $800 to $1,000 more per month. This company is known to have their tenant population be made up of young working professionals. I am considered to be in this demographic, and I am here to say that even though I would be considered a preferred tenant according to their standards, I cannot afford to pay the extra amount of $1,000 more a month. In the recent headlines about our apartment complex, it has been widely discussed that senior residents make up most of the population in my building. However, I am here to represent the young working professionals who also reside at this complex. The senior and disabled residents have more tenant rights and protections, especially in situations like this. On the other hand, young professionals, single parents, young working families, or younger disabled tenants who may not be considered fully disabled are not as protected as senior residents are. Having a fair rent commission is essential in our time of need. Please grant residents like me and those previously mentioned protection from losing their home. As you may notice, our community is made up of homeowners and renters. New management companies are coming in from all over and buying apartment buildings and subsequently forcing out long-term tenants with the ample unrealistic rent increases. With this commission being established, everyone can have protection and have a better fight for staying in their home. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Shelburne. And I'm here to tell you that my family has lived in Nyantique for over 100 years. Family members are Sullivan, Hillier, Marion was the cake lady of Nyantique, I don't remember her last name, Smith, great-grandmother from Ireland, Perkins, Finn, Malletts, and on my father's side, the Dunavens. My mother was a family of eight. Her mother died when she was seven, her father when she was 15. They lived in Nyantique on Main Street. They were called the Poor Children of Nyantique. Many people, including the house up the corner, Casablanca's, I believe, fed my family, my mother's family. I'm not a very good speaker, sorry.
You're doing fine.
You're doing great.
The main thing I'm here is really from the heart. I want to be a part of Nyantique. I want to be a part of the roots of Nyantique, and I am being pushed out. I cannot afford to live here in Windward Apartments. That's basically what I wanted to say. That's it. So it's heartbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you start, could you just center the microphone a little bit so it... Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's much better. Thank you.
My name is Janet Carlson. I live at Windward Village 468 Main Street in Nyantique. I have lived there since February of this year, but I've been a resident of East Lime since 2001. I moved to Windward Village because my husband had to go into memory care, forcing me to sell our house and downsize because of financial issues. I have adjusted to my new living situation, and I have been happy there. That is, until Alpha Capital bought the building. Since then, tenants have been subjected to extraordinary rent increases and other demands that have shattered our peace of mind and left us worrying and wondering what is coming next. Having a fair rent commission would give us an avenue to fight against this new landlord whose only interest is making money. They do not care who they hurt in the process. I urge you to establish a fair rent commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya, and then Jean, you're right after Tanya.
Good evening. Here's a long story short. 2017, I was run over by a car in Salem and became disabled. Moved to Nyantique, especially Main Street, for my healing and recovery. I had just learned how to walk again. Then, three years later, out of nowhere, my building was sold, and I was told I had 30 days to vacate. Then 60, then 90. I panicked at that time, and then I was told I can stay for $2,250. That is $800 more than I pay now. I looked everywhere for a place, but was told four- to five-year waiting list, or I didn't fit into the category with the number of people. I have children, and one still lives with me. I have no choice but to sign a lease I cannot afford. We need a fair rent commission because nobody should have to fear of losing their home. Every tenant should be treated fairly, and after hearing the landlord has discriminated against elderly and disabled, we need a fair rent commission. We need a fair rent commission in case the housing does not fit local or state health and safety standards, and after they have put paint down our outside drains, I would say we definitely need one. A fair rent commission can investigate complaints about unfair rent increases, which is what we are going through now, and we need an order to our landlord to lower our rent. My rent of $2,250 was due August 1st. I gave everything I had when my social security check came in and came up $550 short. I have no money for any other bills that will come in, and I do not know if I will get evicted because I cannot pay it all. I did reach out to Alpha Capital Thursday, August 1st. Three phone calls, two emails later, no response. Thank you. Tanya Harris.
Can you say your name again?
Yeah, I understand.
Tanya, T-O-N-Y-A Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S.
I have lived in Nyantique. My name is Jean Church, and my special daughter lives with me. We love it here. We love the people here. We join the church next door to us. And now my daughter is heartbroken to think we would have to leave, because if they go up on my rent, I will have to leave, and I don't want to, and she doesn't. And they don't care. They've ruined the inside of our place. They just throw paint around. They're trying to make us feel uncomfortable to the point, oh, well, who cares? Now they've got an automatic air conditioner running in the hall because they don't know how to do it. So some people have got air condition. The hall is freezing. I talked to Mr. Cunningham, Selectman Cunningham, about the paint that went down all the holes. It was disgusting, and thank you. I really appreciate you helping us out, because it would have been pouring... They had the nerve to say they didn't do it. There's all kinds of empty paint cans behind our garbage place. So it's scary to think you got... I don't have to move until next year, because I've only been here three years, April 7th, and my lease is up 28th of February. But we want to... We love the playhouse. The people are so nice. We've had friends. We don't want to leave. Thank you.
Is Kristen speaking, Jean? Oh, Kristen. This is Jean's daughter, Kristen.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Church. I live in Nyantique, Connecticut, 468 Main Street. But I'm gonna... I don't want to move yet, because I like cooking and cleaning, and I like to stay for a while, and I think Mom needs to move next year, probably if it's the amount of the rent. Yeah, not over nine or eight or something. I like to walk to the ballpark, and I like to have some fun, go to the concerts, at the band show, or at the beach. It was nice. So I'm looking forward to it. I'm not going to move soon, but I have lots of things to talk about, what I'm going to do in the days to come. So I'll thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Sims, 10 Green Valley Lake. I actually don't live at this complex. I'm also, full disclosure, one of the registrars of voters here. I wanted to share a story that happened in my office in October. This is nothing new here. In October, I had a couple, right before the municipal election, they came in. The gentleman was a disabled veteran. He and his wife had lived in an apartment for years, and same thing happened. New owner came in, purchased the complex, doubled rents. They fixed their income, they had to move out, stayed at Morton House for a while, finally found something, a little out of their price range, but they wanted to stay in Nyantique. This is someone that came into my office to change their voter registration address, to make sure they still had their right to vote. From my perspective, I'm worried about where are these people going to go? We have less than three months until an election. Where are they going to vote? How are they going to prove their address? How are they gonna... If they can't stay here, where are they going to go? How are they... How are they going to vote in November? This is a problem for them, another aspect that we have to worry about, and it's not just this complex. It has happened before. It will continue happening without a fair rent commission. Thank you.
I'm up next. My name is Laura Taglinetti. Live at 468 Main Street. What this gentleman is passing out to you are snapshots of Alpha Capital's social media posts, which clearly depict their priorities. The first one in the top-left corner is a snapshot of a reel that Alicia pointed out their preference are young professionals. So I just wanted that on record, that that is their preference. Another post that they've taken down, they've gone through and edited a lot of their posts, they've deleted, they've hidden all of their comments. One post they took down was about a property they purchased in Wallingford, two and a half years ago, with the following verbiage. It was 21 units, purchased for $2.1 million. Rents were only about $1,000, whereas they were upwards of $1,800 in the area. And the quotes, "Within a year, we went in there. We almost doubled the rents. With the month-to-month tenants, we put in a new tenant basis in there." So they refer to us as tenant basis, not people. And I'm sorry, I got a little distracted by passing that out. I wanted to start that I've lived in Windward Village for 15 years. These are my friends. I joked with people that when I moved in, I brought the average age down by about 20 years, but now I am that average age. We take care of each other. We're a diverse group, and I, looking at aging parents, I recognize that having multi-generational neighbors, like as a social community, is important. It's important for me, it's important for them. Before that, I grew up across the river on High Ridge Drive, and I spent my childhood in Nyantique at the cinema, renting from the movie rental place, and Chinese, that was a fun Friday night, shopping at Finest and Pete Mitchell's, and going in the back door at Smith's Pharmacy to see John. So I've... This community means a lot to me. So I wanted to share that. And the other perspective I wanted to share about the fair rent commission is that I'd like to think it will hold Alpha Capital and landlords, hold them, sorry, hold them responsible for their actions. Because right now, my thought is that when they didn't respond to the fire alarm being out, and they had to pay to have someone on fire watch from 8:00 PM to 3:00 PM, they don't care. They're going to pass that on to us. The costs associated with the environmental cleanup of the paint, they'll pass that on to us. I don't know for sure if they've been fined for anything else. Their building inspector has been out and had to stop them because they're not getting the proper work permits. None of the contractors knew what building codes were. I'm an architect, and I was able to see that there were a lot of code violations in the building and alerted the building inspector about that. And I was told that no contractor knew what a building code was. So I'd like to think that that'll hold them accountable for their actions, as well as the rent renewal process. They're not doing anything by the book. They're calling us, they're sending us text messages about a legally binding document. And if there's a rent, fair rent commission in place, we can tell them... I mean, I have no problem telling them I will not communicate about a legally binding document through a text message, but not everyone understands that and has the guidance for that. So thank you very much for your time.
My name is Judy Pluff, and I live at Windward Village. I've lived here for 21 years. I don't have a speech prepared, but I can tell you that I probably aged 21 years since Alpha Capital took over. I don't sleep a lot at night. I worry all day, and I don't just worry for me, I worry for all of you, because I love all of them. And it's very emotional to me. They are my family, and I've met more people in the last three months in the building, and I love them all. We're a community within a community, and it's just so harmful what Alpha Capital has done to all of us. It's shameful. I don't know if we can hold the former owner partly responsible, because I feel like he should have done his homework and know who he was selling to. He's part of the community and has been for many years, from what I understand. But 21 years of my life, I thought I was going to die here, and honestly, I might. I don't know. My lease isn't up until the end of January. They are asking me if I'm going to stay, and I'm not going to tell them yet, because I don't have to tell them yet. But they're just not a good company to deal with. They're ruthless, and we need a fair rent trade commission in this town, not just for us, but for anybody that rents. I can't understand any town that wouldn't have one, because it might... You might all be homeowners, I don't know, but there might be relatives, family, whoever, friends, that are going through the same thing, and it's just, it's not right. It's not right to put people out in the street. So that's it. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Carlson. I'm a legal aid attorney with Connecticut Legal Services. I represent seniors in Nyantique throughout the shoreline and throughout eastern Connecticut. And I wanted to just take a moment or two to explain the benefits of fair rent commissions for our communities. And I'm not here by mistake. I'm here because this year, the federal government began tracking elderly homelessness by age for the first time. And it fired me up, and it broke my heart, because Connecticut is number one in New England in rates of unsheltered elder homelessness. 21% of homeless elders sleep in their cars, sleep in parks. I help seniors with rent increases, and I've helped seniors in towns without fair rent commissions, and they're sleeping in their cars. Industrial landlords like Alpha Capital, they're not mom-and-pop landlords. They're not invested in our communities. They don't care if there's homelessness in our communities. So a fair rent commission is a 55-year-old solution to this crisis. We know there's larger systemic issues. We need 100,000 affordable units in Connecticut to house our population. That's going to take years. We know it's a political struggle, but commissions, fair rent commissions can be established quickly, and they make a difference. Landlords in towns like Groton with fair rent commissions know they have to account for their rent increases. So when I help seniors in those towns, we know we could bargain with the landlord, an industrial landlord, in a fair and even way. We have really good laws on the books for seniors and for working families in Connecticut, but those laws are meaningless if there's not a venue in the community that folks can go to to have that healthy adversarial relationship that our American legal system has. So I just wanted to come here. I stand in complete solidarity with the elders in our community and with the working families in our community. I'm happy to be here, and their stories are clear. We need an expedited process. This community does not have time. So I encourage the council to move quickly on this issue. And every day lost is a day where a senior is at risk of homelessness. So I thank you for your time. I encourage you to build on this community support and act quickly to adopt a fair rent commission. Thank you so much for your time.
Josh, Joshua Kasky?
Hello, I'm Joshua Kasky, and my address is One Groom's Way. So I've lived in East Lime for the better part of a decade, and I have seen the increasing severity of the housing crisis in eastern Connecticut and in East Lime. And as a person who is soon to graduate from Connecticut College and would love to continue to live in East Lime, I am worried that I will not be able to live in East Lime as these capital groups continue to buy up land and apartment buildings and will continue to increase rents if a fair rent commission is not established. So the establishment of this fair rent commission will be the first step in the right direction in making East Lime affordable to seniors and to everybody else who rents in East Lime. Sorry, I... So the housing situation is a long-term problem that is systemic, as Chris said, and the big problem is affordable housing and the lack of it, which has been fought by East Lime and the zoning commission here in recent months. But the establishment of this fair rent commission would be the first step into remedying our lack of affordable housing and the crazy rent increases that people have seen, which have been upwards of 70% $900 rent increases in a month, which is just unbelievably unbelievable to me. We should not be forced out of housing due to apathetic and profit-driven landlords that are, come from out of town and buy up million-dollar houses and rent them out to seniors and to young people just to make a quick buck. So in closing, I strongly support the establishment of the fair rent commission today so that the residents of Windward Village can stay in East Lime into the future, and I'll be able to stay in East Lime once I graduate from Connecticut College. And if the fair rent commission is not established, these people will go homeless, they will move out, I won't be able to stay here, and that would be bad.
My name is Beth Sibilia, and I'm the Director of the Center for Housing Equity and Opportunity in Eastern Connecticut. I am also a retired politician, so I am going to limit my comments to those that have not yet been made, not that I don't agree with them. CHEO believes that housing is a human right. It's a human right, and it's a community asset that we don't talk about enough. I'm here today to strongly advocate for the establishment of a fair rent commission in East Lime and to do so expeditiously in light of the recent alarming steep rent increases and conditions that profoundly impact the well-being and stability of your community. Beyond the immediate human impact that you've heard today, housing insecurity imposes astronomical costs on society. It strains public resources from emergency healthcare services to social support systems, and it contributes to a broader community economic instability. The financial burden of building new affordable housing to replace this naturally occurring affordable housing complex is at $500,000 per unit as we speak today. To replace this building in an affordable fashion would cost $30 million today. Think about that. If we're talking about dollars and cents in chambers of commerce and Main Street, USA, think about that. Think about that tax burden. It's unsustainable, and it highlights the critical need for preventative measures like a fair rent commission to maintain housing affordability and stability. A fair rent commission would provide a necessary and effective mechanism to address these concerns. I want to pause for a minute and appreciate you that have come to our public meetings to talk about this issue. I will say, I opened with, I'm a rehabbed politician, or elected official, I should say, because I know how ordinances are adopted. There is absolutely no reason that this should be drawn out or take much longer than absolutely necessary. These people don't have a year. They simply don't have a year. To do so, to establish the fair rent commission, you're investing in the long-term stability and well-being of East Lime. It's a crucial step to safeguarding the rights of tenants, 30... 30% of us are tenants and ensuring that all residents, all neighbors, especially our elderly population, have access to fair, affordable housing. Our organization is ready to support this initiative in any way possible and we stand ready to answer any questions. Thank you for your attention.
I'm a Vietnam veteran. I served two tours over Vietnam. I continue to serve the government in this area for 34 years and I just retired at the age of 74. I'll be 75 in August 12th and my lease runs out at the end of this month and I have to pay $1,900, okay, for an apartment that's only 616 square feet. I think that's kind of atrocious. Now, everybody said a lot of good things and I don't want to keep repeating all the same things, but I think the bottom line is we got to establish this commission tonight because I have to move up or make a decision to pay the high price. And I love this town because I watched this town grow. I used to go do my laundry down in Niantic and go over to Friendly's Ice Cream and have my breakfast and it wasn't a car on the street. Now it's really grown and it's a beautiful town. It's gorgeous and we're lucky to be where we are, but we need your support and we need you to sign this document tonight because I fought for people overseas. I want someone to fight for us and we need it today.
I'm going to speak for Judy Glickstein, so imagine I'm shorter, silver hair. She's spicy, but I'll keep it tongue down. All right. My name is Judith Glickstein. I live at 468 Main Street at Windward Village Apartments. I've been a resident at Windward Village for 10 years, but I originally moved to Niantic in 1966. I'm here today to urge the creation of a fair housing commission. Some of my apartment neighbors have lived at Windward Village for 21, 14, 8, 6 years. They are long-term residents of East Lime. In mid-June, our building was sold for $8.4 million to Alpha Capital Management and they came in like gangbusters, threatening tenants whose leases were due with rent increases of $800, $900, $1,000 more a month. Out of 60 units, approximately 40 are rented to seniors or disabled tenants on fixed incomes and cannot afford an increase of that amount. It is unacceptable that we are left without any protection against these absurd increases. We are a vital part of this community. Please do not abandon us in our hour of need. Our leases are due. We don't have time to waste. What does this say about our town? Please form the fair housing commission now, the fair rent commission now. We can't afford to wait. You have an opportunity to be part of this challenge. This is an emergency situation. Bravery, courage, and faith will succeed. Thank you for your time. Judy Glickstein.
Hello, my name is John Montzouris. My name is John Montzouris. I've been living in the Windward Village in Niantic, going on three years with my wife. Currently, we're paying for one-bedroom, $1150 a month. By this fall, it'll be $1,950. That's $800 now. That's just absurd. It's way out of left field that Alpha Corporation can sleep at night. I mean, how can they sleep at night knowing that they're doing it to us? And I feel bad for us, but I feel worse for the seniors that are on fixed incomes and they'll have no place to go within weeks or months. $1,950 a month, you know, is for luxury units. Our apartments are 25-years-old, stove's not working properly, the oven's not working great, the refrigerator makes noises and creaks and it's hard to keep the temperature at a right level. We're not getting any anomalies for $1,950, $2,000, $2,500 a month. I mean, what are we getting? We're getting old units. I mean, they're, you know, I'm just, I don't want to repeat what everybody says, but we have to really do this, as the other gentleman said, tonight. We can't wait and everybody's really fed up with it. And that's all I have to say and thank you for holding us here tonight. Appreciate it.
Hi. Can you all hear me all right? Hi. I'm Nick Menapace. I live at 38 Hope Street, so I'm not a resident here, but 38 Hope Street in Niantic. I'm here to express my full support for establishing a fair rent commission in East Lime. I think that implementing a fair rent commission is not merely a good idea, but it's a vital measure to greatly help the people of East Lime, not just renters, but also potentially landlords and honestly, homeowners as well. I firmly believe that to safeguard the well-being of our community, it is important to provide more than just moral support. Everyone can be sympathetic, but we have a lot that we really can do and this is a very, very good first step. Sorry. It is important to protect our residents from this potential exploitation and I would like to say that I know that our residents and our board need more support than even just what will be establishing a fair rent commission. As I said, I think it's a great first step, but it's going to need us to have that support from the state. And I would, that's part of the reason why I'm up here speaking, is that I would really like to say that in doing this, I would like you to consider either tonight or very much hopefully tonight, consider the idea of having an additional resolution to call on that support from the state. A fair rent commission, as I said, it's a good beginning, but we're going to need more protections for these people. And just to be clear, if you do pass on this and you choose not to establish a fair rent commission, I think it very much does give the go-ahead to other groups to come in and do this exact same thing. Because right now, there are functionally no protections and as all of these people have discovered, there's just, that's not good enough because when the only option is, okay, pay $800 more dollars or be homeless, that's an extremely tough thing for someone who doesn't know how they're going to come up with that additional $800 every month. So that I ask you to come here tonight, establish a fair rent commission, I also ask that you consider a resolution asking our state legislators to support additional measures to protect our residents. Because as everyone has said, this is our community. These people are all members of our community and they deserve a lot more than they're getting right now. All right. Thank you for your time.
There's four more included. This gentleman just heads up.
Good evening. My name is Webb Browden. I live at 8 Patagonia Court and I am the owner of 74 East Patagonia Road. I received an email, actually I received a letter from my tenant at East Patagonia saying that this was also going to be a discussion about the sidewalk on East Pat. So I respect everybody's time here in discussing this, but I also, as a landlord, would like to be able to say that I would certainly support what everyone is talking about with this commission. Also with the caveat that I am a small-time landlord, right? One house and renting it out and all. So I have the same concerns they have, but on the other side, where you can get insurance increases out of the blue that are ridiculous. Everyone's got car insurance and house insurance that goes through the roof. The town taxes have an effect on it as well, that all go into how you calculate a rent to charge a tenant and all, to be fair, plus maintenance and everything. So fully supportive of that. All I want to know is, are we going to be able to talk about the sidewalk too or? I don't want to, again, get in the way. Can anybody answer that?
You're welcome to talk about any topic that you.
Okay. Just quickly then, on the sidewalk. My house on 74 East Pat is less than 25 feet from the road. It's on the west side of the road and I understand the sidewalk is going to be on that side as well. So I'm boarded by the road there and East Patagonia River on the other side. We've owned the house since 1981 and it's slowly, the East Patagonia River has slowly crept into my yard and into my basement several times, much more so than in the past. A lot of this, I think, is based on development and runoff and obviously some climate change, but I don't think it's solely climate change. By putting the sidewalk on the side of the road that they're talking about, it would literally put it in my front yard. It slopes down from the road to my house, so there'd have to be something built to keep the sidewalk level with the road, so there's going to be an awful drop-off. I don't know why they wouldn't put it on the other side where it's level and flat. There aren't trees, there aren't telephone poles and they'd be able to, they have crosswalks at different locations on this road, so they'd be able to put a crosswalk at either Bush Hill or Dodge Town where there's probably a lot of walkers there. There's quite a large population there. So I guess I'm asking if there's any consideration for where this sidewalk is going and how it's determined to go where it's proposed now. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Barbara Anne. Can I also put a sidewalk tonight? Can we go now? So I just want to talk about it.
Sure.
I'm Holly Marullo. I live at 97 East Patagonia. I actually reached out to the town a few years ago, asking if there was any thought of putting a sidewalk on our road because we love walking into town and we're less than a mile from town, but people go very quickly on that road. So especially now, I have a stroller, we have a dog, and there's like a third of a mile where it's very scary to walk. We do it like maybe once a month. If it's like a day where there's a town event and we think that we should walk in, but I was very happy to hear that there is going to be a sidewalk. I believe it's confirmed. So I just want to say that we are fully in support of the sidewalk on whatever side it's on.
Thank you, Holly.
My name is Barbara Booth. I live at 34 Riverview Road, Niantic, and I've been living here since 1974 in town. I wrote this about in spring after I had a meeting with Coffee with a Cop. We had a function at the senior center and I talked to Officer Hull at that time and was concerned about a young mother who is using an e-bike, the electric bikes on Riverview Road. And our road is very heavily trafficked now, especially since all the population that's moving into the town. So I wrote this in the spring, so I'm just going to read what I have now. Thank you. Because of our increase in population of people moving into our town from New York and Boston and everywhere in between, they found out that Niantic is really a beautiful hidden treasure. We have a gift of beauty from our landscape of our park trails, our beaches, our museums, and we have a quaint downtown shopping area. We have wonderful restaurants that make delicious food by wonderful chefs that we have and we have the hospitality of wonderful people that live in Niantic. Because of our population, there is an obscene increase in traffic on Route 161, Flanders Road and Pennsylvania Road heading towards downtown Niantic. People who are familiar with alternate roads travel by way of Dean Road, Society Road, they go through Riverview Road, Roxbury Road, et cetera, to avoid the heavy traffic on Route 161 to get to downtown. Or to travel in the other direction towards Boston Post Road, they'll go back the other way, Riverview Road and all through that, Society, Dean Road and out. Riverview Road is a winding road with curves and hills. For some reason, I don't know why, but people love to speed on that road. This is not a good road to walk or to ride a bike on or any, really to have an increase of traffic on that road. We now have an increase in traffic from people wanting to live here. This increase is also causes an increase in school buses that are coming into the town from the children that are moving in, construction trucks because of all the construction that's being done in the town for the new housing developments that are happening in town. Also from people that are no longer shopping in the stores. Our stores at Crystal Mall is no longer here, so people are doing online shopping, so we have FedEx, Amazon, all the other truck, delivery trucks coming into the area. We also have an increase of people traveling to and from work each day and returning. We also have people from summer coming back to our town from Boston, New York, and everywhere else in between. The problem with Riverview Road, we had two deaths on Riverview Road. That's why I'm here from 1974. I know the death. One death was Mr. Fenwick who lived here and he went across the road to get his mail and he was hit by a car. So his mailbox is on the other side of the road from his house. The car was speeding down that road and with that speed, he was unable to stop in time to not hit Mr. Fenwick and Mr. Fenwick died just trying to get his mail. The other death that we had on that road was a really sad accident. A group of boys, girls in a car, they were speeding, they were going from Rox, they were going from Roxbury Road to down towards Society where the cemetery is. So they had to, they were speeding so fast, they crossed the lane, they hit the pole in front of the cemetery, the car exploded, there was a massive fire and that was it. I don't know who got out and who didn't get out, but there was a massive fire and those children were there. The road on Riverview Road needs to be slowed down. We have, our speed limit is 25 miles per hour on that road and people, for some reason, I don't know why, they love to speed on it. I went through the area, Roxbury Court in that area, Patrick Lane in that section of town, and their speed limit is only 20 miles per hour. So even that little reduction in speed might save someone's life. We've also had mail trucks that pull over to the side of the road, they get out of their truck and the truck goes down the hill. But the main concern is people speeding. I don't know what really can be done except to have some sort of, we did have a speed sign up for to slow down, to do 25 miles per hour, but they don't pay attention to that. So we're trying to avoid a death on that road. You can't really walk on it and now that we have all the buildings of all these homes being built and apartment houses that are being put up in town, that we have so many more people and so much more traffic in town. So something needs to be, something needs to be done about it. So what else do I want to say? So I had a couple of suggestions for, one was to put in speed bumps, but I was told that that's very, not a very good idea because of the school buses and I kind of do agree with that. But what I wanted to say also was that we have a fire department that protects people and life. We have a police department that protects people and they protect life. We have lifeguards that protect people and they protect life. We have doctors, we have nurses that protect people and they protect life. We have our teachers in our schools that protect our children, they protect life. We have the National Guard that protects people and they protect life. The town of East Lime needs to protect our people who walk and ride their bikes on our road. We need to protect our people. I also agree with what every senior is going through with their housing dilemma because I've been living in my house since 1974 and I've been trying to move out of my house, trying to find a place to move into and I can't afford to leave my house, which needs to be repaired. And I can't afford really to repair the house, but I can't afford to move out into an apartment complex that is very expensive. an apartment complex that is very expensive, and I've even looked like in Hartford area, and the pricing there is even higher. So I know what everyone is going through, and it's a great concern that we need to protect people. That's, that's what we're here for, we're for each other. And I just want to say that integrity, honesty, and truth, that is the gold, silver, and the bronze crown, and to take care of everybody else, that is the crown of everything. That's the Lord.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Janet? And one more after Janet.
Hi, my name's Janet Ferris Chobanian. I live at 215 Main Street. It's the Morton House. I'm also very lucky to work there. Recent happenings, especially with the Windward Village situation, has got me thinking. Last week, we were asked, both me and my coworker, to measure the rooms and apartments within our building. This week, they are coming to do an inspection and walk through our rooms. My gut feeling is telling me that there is a real estate entity of some sort coming after our building as well. We are a building of approximately 50 people. We have many seniors. We have many disabled people in our building. I too am a working disabled woman. I work part-time there, and I'm scared about what's going to happen to me and my neighbors. Like someone had said earlier, we are a community within this community. My family lives in Florida and tell me what a paradise they're living in. Well, I love sending them pictures of the town I live in. I feel I live in paradise, and I feel very blessed to have lived in this town for the last five years. I feel it is necessary for a rent, fair rent commission to be formed. We are the people that work at your restaurants, we work at your local bookstore, we work at your Stop &amp; Shop, and as me, I work, help taking care of the Morton House. I'm not really sure what more to say. I hope you all consider this. There are so many seniors in this town, there are disabled people in my building. I don't know what would happen if our building gets bought by an entity such as Alpha Capital. You will have 50 more people facing homelessness with nowhere to go. Many of the people in our building live from social security check to social security check with nothing in between, and I fear for them. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Divine Smith, the other half of the fearless registrar voters. I came here with no intention on speaking tonight, but I have to say, look at this crowd. Everybody here has been here forever and a day. The woman I'm sitting with is like a mother to me. I met her when I was 10 years old, when I moved here in 1970. This woman lives here at Windward Village. What, two weeks, 10 weeks ago, I had a heart attack, okay? My 2,200 square foot home is paid for, thank God, okay? But what's going to happen to me when, when my husband has to go into a nursing home or I need long-term care? I thought, I'll just get an apartment. Hell, no, it's not going to happen. So what are we going to do? We're going to fix it. How can I help? Where can we start? That's, it begins with me, and it begins with everybody here in this room. And tell me what we can do, and let's all do it together.
Thank you.
I know I already spoke about the housing, but I would like to, since we got into a little bit about the sidewalks, I wanted to go put in my two cents about that.
Just give your name.
Joshua Kasky, One Grimsway. So I work at the book barn on 47 West Main Street. So to be clear, this is past the sidewalk, so the sidewalk ends, I think around, I want to say it's a Niantic Center School, so it ends around there. And during the summer, during my past two years of summer, I have seen dozens of people per day walk on the side of the road on 156, walking on the side of the road from the, I guess, like, Niantic area, so from the beach area from that side, walking east, I believe, to the book barn on that, like, shoulder part. There's no sidewalk there. It's very narrow. People drive, the posted speed limit is 35, which if people did follow the speed limit, would still be unconscionable to walk next to on a normal day. By building this sidewalk from, by extending the sidewalk from Niantic Center to, I think, Park Place, where there are, there are a few businesses, the book barn's back there, people walk from Niantic to Village Pizza to Charlie's Place. Then there's some apartments by Park Place, too. People walk there every day, people bike there every day, and I, it's a matter of when someone gets hit and probably killed, going 35 or 50 miles an hour on that street. There's a person that I work with at the book barn who lives in the Morton House, and he walks to work every day, walking along that narrow shoulder, and it's, it's concerning walking, for him, walking in the rain, the snow. He has no, she has no car, so she does not have any sort of method other than walking. And that is important to build, continue to build out bike lanes and sidewalks that reduce traffic, that make our streets safer, and that provide equity and equality for anybody traveling, including people who don't have cars, who only have bikes, and who have, and who walk places. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Booth again, 34 Riverview Road. I found one thing that I wanted to say before. When I said that, I had a suggestion. We did use the stop signs of drives do 25 miles per hour on Riverview Road, but what about if we put a stop sign on the road, on both sides of the road, one at Beverly or maybe one at Echo, so when they're coming down, they have to stop. You put stop signs on, you have stop signs now, we're housing development at Coastal, off of Dean Road, at Coastal Apartments there. So you have Coastal Apartments, Cove Apartments that were built, and then on the other side, going towards 95 South, you have other apartments in there that go off into Bribrook Road, North Bribrook Road. So you did put stop signs there, so people, we used to just drive right through, now we have to stop. So if we can, we know that the stop sign, the speed limit signs of 25 miles per hour, that doesn't work, but if we put a stop sign somewhere on Riverview Road, it'll have to click, they have to stop, and then they start again, and maybe it'll slow them down somewhat in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth, sorry. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Dowd. I live at 66 East Patagansett with my husband, Tim, and my two elementary school-aged children. I wanted to speak first briefly to the sidewalks. I'm very excited to have the sidewalks on East Patagansett. I will comment that my neighbor to the north who spoke before, his yard usually looks like a duck pond after most rains, and I, we have had questions about, about the selection of where the sidewalks are going. I'm very excited to see them in. I'd love to have a little bit more communication from the engineer about how it's going to affect our property as the project progresses. Also, on the issue of housing, my father moved here from Long Island because he couldn't afford to live on Long Island. I'm fortunate to have a house. My father is, would love to be retired, but he cannot be. He works at Shop &amp; Stop at the moment. He cannot, cannot afford to live in East Lime. He's living in New London. His rent is about to go up, but he has the support in New London, I believe, of a fair rent commission. And I strongly, strongly support the prompt formation of a fair rent commission in East Lime, because there are, but for the grace of God, go I, is my feeling on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emma Johnson. I live at 74 East Patagansett Road. I live at, they said, Duck Pond House. I do think the sidewalk is a great idea. People fly around that corner. I'm sure everyone knows that, that has driven that street. I do think the flooding of the river should be taken into consideration where the sidewalk should be placed. Everyone on the riverside of that road understands the flooding. It goes in the basement. We've had years where we have four feet of water, the entire road, the water's up to our house. It's already eroding so much, and adding that sidewalk, it would be a lot, not to mention the guardrails that have to be taken down that provide safety for us, for the people that do fly around that corner, with our house only being 25 feet from the road. That is a concern for us as well. We have trees right on the road line as well that keep us safe as well, so I'd like that to be taken into consideration on the placement of the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other delegations tonight? Any other delegations? Being none, I want to thank everybody that took the time and effort to come out and address the Board of Selectmen tonight. It's very important for us to receive your input and your feedback, and we will certainly take all your comments into consideration as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yes, it is. And just, yeah, good idea. So as the meeting progresses, on the agenda, we will be discussing, there'll be a presentation on the sidewalks in a few minutes, in a little while, and we will be making commentary and discussing the idea of a fair rent commission. So welcome to stick around and hear that, and as we, as we move forward through the agenda. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 3, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 3, 2024, as submitted.
Any discussion? Do I hear a second?
A second.
I think she's second.
That was wrong.
We have a second?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Somebody else has a second.
It was me.
Yeah, somebody else. You take a break today.
There we go. Any, any discussion or corrections or comments on the minutes of July 3?
No.
Being none, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is what we call the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for August 7, 2024, in the amount of $3,725.20.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, the consent calendar motion carries. All right, next section of the agenda, new business. We have the year 2024 departmental transfers.
Move to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of $523,343.55, processed for fiscal year end June 30, 2024, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
We have a second. Any commentary on these? Did you want to comment or pretty straightforward?
So these are, you know, we've talked about a lot of these, there's a few I would just like to touch on, if we just want to spend a few seconds here. Some of the larger ones are mainly involving public safety. So if we just go down the list and look at some of the larger ones, dispatchers, as discussed at multiple budget meetings, we knew the dispatcher's overtime line was going to be high based on contract language coming out of their union negotiations when full-timers got first right of refusal for open shifts. So that had about a $90,000 impact on our budget. In '25's budget, we accounted for that, so it's not going to throw next year's budget out too bad. The police, you look, there's $125,000 transfer in the police salary lines, but of that $125,000, the police turned over $92,000 in other lines. So they turned over $7,000 for part-time patrols, $12,000 for foot patrols, $13,000 for overtime on the boat, $24,000 for maintenance of radios and computers, and about $15,000 for training, as well as $13,000 for testing accreditation. So while it looks on here like we transferred 125, really, it was about 35 to cover. Also, Flanders Fire Department and Niantic, they both needed about, well, Flanders needed $15,000 roughly, and Niantic needed $18,000 to cover increased labor costs with the two departments. Do you have any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that. If there isn't any further discussion, all in favor of the year-end 2024 department transfers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, motion carries. Next on our agenda is fiscal year 2025 departmental transfers.
Is it supposed to be '25 or '24?
The second one should be '25.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure, okay. Move to approve the transfer in the amount of $50,000 from contingency to public safety legal services of fiscal year 2025 and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on these transfers? Coming out of contingencies, covering legal, legal service, going to public safety legal services. All right, pretty straightforward. If there isn't any further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have appointments to boards and commissions.
Move to appoint Lindsay Ballenbach of 12 Brannood Road, Niantic, to serve as a member on the Water and Sewer Commission on behalf of the town of East Lime, with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Lindsay has an impressive resume, and we'll be lucky to have her on that commission and serving, serving as chairman of the Water and Sewer Commission. I'm anxious to have someone of her caliber on the commission. So with that said, is there any other commentary? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Sandra Bullock of 6 Heritage Road, East Lime, to serve as a member on the Historic Properties Commission on behalf of the town of East Lime, with a term to expire on January 5, 2026.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any commentary? Her husband, Ben Bullock, he served on historic properties for many years, and it was a great interest. He was a valued member. He passed away, and now his wife would like to also serve on the, on the commission, so.
I thought it was great when I saw that she wanted to serve. I worked with Ben for a few years, and he, he was great. He was very concerned about the town, and, you know, she's also been involved in the town, and I think she'll do a great job.
I agree. Any additional commentary? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that motion carries. Next is discussion of possible action on services to the community budget.
Did you report by the pension board?
What? Oh, jeez, I skipped over. I'm so sorry. Next is the report by the pension board.
All right, I'll be giving that tonight.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, so everyone should have a handout that just says Pension Board, Report to the Board of Selectmen across the top. So I just want to start out by saying, if anyone has any questions about the town's pension plan, if you go to the town website, you go to Boards and Commissions, pull up Pension Board, we post all of our monthly and quarterly investment activity reports on the website, so anyone can follow along on the website. on the website or attend our meetings quarterly. So, just going over our expenses, the pension board's required to report to you guys once a year on the status of the expenses of our pension. So, just going through the list, we're budgeting $5,200 for benefit calculations. So, when employees retire, we contract with our actuary and he provides us with the retirement figures for that individual and to bring them into the pension plan. That individual, just to contract his services, is about $25,000. So, that's USI Consulting. Fiducian advisors is our investment advisors. They tell us really and guide us on which, you know, funds to invest in and gives recommendations on a quarterly basis to us. That's about $41,000. And then the cost to actually administer the plan and the custodial fees for the plan at US Bank is $833 a month, just about, it's about $10,000. And the portfolio fees, $130,000, that comes right out of the plan. That's the actual fees paid to the portfolio funds, the fund managers. So, it doesn't come out of, we don't write a check for that. It comes out of the assets every year. And then, just recently, the pension board added retiree benefit administration. It's about $16,000, but we budgeted 20 in case there was any additional services that they could render. And then, last but not least, is our annual required contribution to the pension plan, which is about $450,000. A portion of that's on the town side. Board of Ed pays a portion and Library also pays a portion of that. So, overall, we're going to spend about $680,000 this year administering our pension plan. There's about $33 million in it right now.
In the plan.
In the plan, yep.
Thank you for that, Kevin. Any questions? Comments? All right. Thank you. Appreciate the.
And our plan is right around 100% funded. I don't have this last month's activity, but we're about 100% funded. So, that $500,000, if we had a couple of bad years, it could balloon over to a million dollar payment for the pension plan. But the last couple of years, we've had some good returns in our pension plan, so.
That's something to be proud of. They've done a great job. Thank you. All right, now, discussion and possible action, services to community budget.
It's discussing the old business, I don't really.
Let's see, we have a, yeah, Adam, we have it on both new business and.
Yeah, so I think it's supposed to be under the old business.
So, we'll just move that, we'll take it off.
Yep, it's already.
Yeah, it's going to be on when we get to old business.
Yeah.
So, we'll just take it off.
All right, so kind of the main event tonight, discussion and possible action, fair rent commission ordinance. So, let me start by saying, first of all, we appreciate all the comments tonight. To start off, once we, you know, understood the importance and concern and the need for a fair rent commission, Dan and I got together and we started working on a draft based on, there was a model fair rent commission ordinance. So, we started with the model ordinance and we modified it to fit the needs of the East Line community. I then met with our town council yesterday, Waller, Smith &amp; Palmer, and I asked them to review the work that we had done. And I was hopeful we would have a ordinance to present to the board this evening. But they had some recommendations for some changes. We want to get it right the first time. We don't want to be coming back and changing it rather than rush through it. We thought that it's important to have the benefit of council. Although we are both attorneys, we are not the town's attorneys. We're just really laypeople in that sense, trying to cobble together this ordinance. But we really needed it to be reviewed by our town attorneys. So, they are doing that. I thought it would be important tonight, since we don't have in front of us, at least maybe to take the temperature and get a sense, get some commentary from the board to see what the feeling is on pursuing this commission. So, if anyone wants to start or anyone has any comments, either way, pro or con.
I'll go, even though my voice is terrible. Hopefully, people can hear me. I know that it's very hard to listen to. I just want to comment on one of the comments that was actually made. How can we help? What can we do? I think it's up for us to set the tone here in East Line that this type of behavior isn't something that we want here. We don't want our people, we don't want anybody to be treated like that. The increases are completely unjustifiable. And I think that, not just myself, but they're shocking. And most people will read the column and keep moving, right? And that's not what needs to happen here. I was actually very hopeful to have something in front of me tonight so that we could move forward. I would like to say that I'm in full support of an expedited process and to be at the table so that I can be part of the process, so that we can move something forward quickly to help protect people here. And I want to thank you all for your comments.
So, I think it all came out in the paper a few weeks ago. And I read it and I was astonished, disappointed, and just, it was awful. I don't know how to put it any other way. And I'm sure, as you have been living with it, that you understand it. So, Dan and I literally have been working on an ordinance. We've been, you know, putting our heads together. I was very hopeful that we were going to have something tonight to present. So, the plan, Plan B, will be with Dan's agreement, that as soon as we get the paperwork back from town council, we plan to put together a special meeting. So, a special meeting is something like we meet, you know, via remote or in person at, say, 2 o'clock on a Tuesday to just kind of go through the ordinance and have a vote on it. So, that way, we can get it moving. And I think it's so important, just really, just to help the people in town. That's what we're really here for. And very pleased that people came out tonight to speak because it's really important and we listen. You know, we're all residents of East Line, you know, and we love the town and we want to do good for all of you. So, that's it.
I don't know if there's any other comments from the board. If there are, you're welcome.
I'd like to comment.
Yes.
I've lived here since 1966, consider myself very heavily invested in the community, and I plan to go out of this community first. So, I'm here and Wynwood Village was a place that I thought that I might eventually go to after I became widowed. We read about these things in the newspaper, happens other places, shouldn't happen in East Line. We're still very much a small community. We know a lot of people. I recognize at least a fourth of the people sitting out here tonight who I've known for many years. And we are committed to doing something about this, something important, but we want to do it right. We don't want to end up getting sued by some developer or something like that. We want to do it right and get it right so that it applies to everybody, everybody in every development in town, not just Wynwood Village. Wynwood Village was kind of a landmark when it came in. People were excited to live there even then. It was a big deal. It was a place where people could, if you didn't have a car, you could walk downtown. You could walk on the sidewalks. Other people moved in who did have cars. Neighbors helped neighbors. Neighbor drove another neighbor who didn't have a car to a doctor's appointment because then we didn't have any town transportation vehicles. And so, this is a vital part of the community and this is the type of development that we should be having in town. And certainly, its location is prime. Buildings age, like us. And a landlord has a responsibility to act responsibly. And certainly, there should have along the way been some things that were done to improve it. But this is, quite frankly, this is an outrage. It really is. And we've spent over an hour here looking at all of your faces and as I said, we're going to do the right thing. And hopefully, it won't be just for us. Hopefully, there's publicity here tonight, that what we do here will help other small towns, smaller towns, where the same thing we see is happening. And so, we've heard you all and definitely, we're on your side. We're part of the group. So, all of us here have lived in town for a period of time and we could, we could live someplace else. You know, in 1966, I could have moved to Old Saybrook. I could have gone to O-line. My husband and I looked. East Line's where we wanted to be and I'm sure that that's what the majority of you people sitting here tonight are thinking too. So, nobody wants to live someplace else. So, we've heard you. We appreciate it. We empathize with you. I almost cried tonight. So, so, good luck. I know. So, so, let's keep this going. Let's be part of the, whole part of the community.
So, unless there are other comments, let me conclude this part of the agenda by just saying, I, I think I speak for the board. We understand the urgency of moving this forward and I will take all necessary steps to move this along. I'm disappointed I don't have a working draft tonight, but as we got into it a little deeper, we realized there were more to it than just picking up the model ordinance. There's some other features that we have to make sure we do right. We're going to do it right and we're going to move this along. And we will schedule, if everyone is agreement, we will schedule a special meeting as soon as I have a draft that we all agree with. And then we'll vote on it. There's some steps after that. It gets, there's notice that has to go in the newspaper. We will then have a public hearing. And then, after the public hearing, if, you know, if everybody, the public votes for us to move forward, then there'll be, right afterwards, a Board of Selectmen meeting where at that time, we can act and move to accept and move forward on the ordinance. And how many days later will it become long? It gets published? So, it gets published and then 10 days after that. So, that's, there is a process. We're going to move the process along as quickly as we can. And I give you my assurance tonight for that. So, thank you for being here tonight. The next item, because we don't have, we're not moving it forward tonight.
Could you just stop for about 30 seconds so people could.
That's a good idea.
And leave if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'm just, this is about the fair rent commission though. Just, yeah, we're not going to schedule a public hearing for the ordinance because we don't have an ordinance. So, that is going off tonight, the scheduling of the public hearing.
I thought I mean a break.
Yeah, and then we will take a five-minute recess and we'll be back at 8:30.
Thank you all so much.
We're back on the record. And what did we say it was? 8:34. Okay. So, the next item on our agenda, new business, is to appoint William Willetts to check the indices for, that's attorney William Willetts, to check indices for 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Move to appoint William Willetts to serve as, to serve in the office of, oh.
Oh, I think we have.
Checking indices.
I'll do it. Okay. Move to, I just didn't see. Move to appoint attorney William Willetts Jr. to examine the indices of the land records for calendar year 2024 in accordance with CGS Section 7-14 for the sum of $2,000.
All right, do we hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. We always appreciate attorney Willetts doing that for us. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of possible action on the community center fees.
Move to approve the updated fees for the community center.
All right.
Second. We're going to talk about it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have a second, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's, so let's have some discussion.
So, my understanding is that someone rented a space and when it was presented with the bill, they disputed some fees and Jerry Locken went back to try and find where these fees came from and couldn't. And then it evolved into this whole conversation about coverage with custodians. So, ostensibly, we would just be here to kind of parse through that or take input from them. I'm not entirely sure what the discussion would look like.
Is Jerry here tonight?
No.
Or is anybody here from there?
No.
No.
Curious.
Well, yeah.
So, these are not new fees.
No, I think they wanted to update the fees for the use of the community center, but.
I think they were, they were old fees, but they were so old that no one could find what piece of paper.
Documentation.
Yeah, documentation.
Okay.
It looks like they have a proposed form. I have something that says proposed form. So, is this like the new form then?
Yeah, he did draft a new form that has the new fees on it.
Okay, and it says, I guess this is added language, use of these facilities outside of normal building operating hours or those requiring more than normal custodial support will result in custodial charges of $50 per hour for the first eight hours and $75 per hour for the nine hours or more.
So, is this meant for outside entities? So, not, right, so not.
So, when people rent, it's fees for people when they do rent.
Yes. So, for the fee application, it says, East Line Town Board Agency and Commissioner was no charge.
No charge.
Civic clubs, organizations, no charge, not-for-profit, no charge.
Okay, okay. So, outside, out of town, shall incur use charges and any other charges.
Has Jerry asked the Board of Selectmen for anything explicitly or just kind of presented us with all of this?
Well, he presented the proposed form and I think that's what he'd like us to approve.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure that we're not imposing, you know, any type of fee on our, on profits, on our groups.
I know, that's a.
That kind of thing.
Something.
I'd be curious as to how the board would feel about delaying any further discussion on this matter until we have an explicit ask. I mean, I understand he framed all this and that there is some confusion, but clearly, there's some confusion among the six of us as to what we could offer to help the situation. So, maybe we just get an email even from Jerry saying this is what we would like and we could discuss that plan or if he'd be willing to come in and testify.
Or actually put it on an agenda and have him come.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right.
It would be helpful because I, you know, there's a lot of different, like, papers that, I'm not quite sure which is.
I'm still glad I'm not the only one.
Which is which. No, I read through them all and I'm like trying to figure it out.
Why don't we table it? We'll invite Jerry to be here.
Yeah.
And then we can be a little bit better prepared to act on it.
I appreciate that. I just want to be very careful with the fee situation and with some concerns. And I just want to make sure that we're not adding more and more on our own people.
I agree. You're right.
Agreed.
Yep. So, let's, we'll table two aye and we'll schedule that at the next meeting. We'll ask Jerry to be here and then he can explain it all.
So, we had done a motion in a second, so.
We'll just withdraw.
We just withdraw that then. Do we need, we don't need to motion to do that. We just withdraw.
We'll just draw the motion.
Okay, all right. So, that's withdrawn.
Okay. So, now we'll turn to old business and that is discussion on the East Patagonic sidewalk. And we do have a presentation tonight.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight with our town engineer, Alex Close. I'm Gary Gashill, town planner. And we did send a notice to the abutters of East Patagonic Road. Notice of this meeting that it's an informational session, in which we did get a commitment from the state of Connecticut DOT to fund this project for a sidewalk along East Patagonic from Route 161 to Route 156. So, we'll just start with the existing conditions and the need for repair. Obviously, I think most of you here are familiar with the road. And the entire road corridor from 156 to 161, or vice versa, is essentially inadequate. It's deteriorated to a point where it needs complete repair. In addition, there's a portion of sidewalk that runs from Niantic Center School to approximately Brook Road. It's obviously, it's relatively narrow. It's about four feet wide, I believe it is. So, it's kind of undersized. And there's a low, less than a five-inch curb reveal. And it's not ADA compliant. As I just said, there's been numerous patching work done over the years. And the sidewalk as a whole is, does it extend from Brook all the way to Route 161? So, our proposal is to put the sidewalk in. Obviously, we'll have a whole sidewalk. We'll be able to make the entire loop. The East Line Plan of Conservation Development promotes the, continued promote, sorry. It promotes multi-formal forms of transportation. Obviously, it's promoting safe sidewalks, bike lane systems. And there's a little reference there to the section in the 2020 POCD, page 118, specifically as it relates to East Patagonic Road and installation of the sidewalk there. The Route 161 corridor study, which we recently completed, also contemplates the intersection of Route 161 and East Patagonic. Essentially, it recommends that we re-signalize that intersection, as well as provide accessible, pedestrian-accessible signals. And the 2017 Regional Plan of Conservation and Development also supports the project. In general, the Council of Government supports regionally the prioritization and expansion improvement for sidewalks and bike facilities. So, it is in line with that. So, the proposed improvements, as I said, which have been, we've received a commitment to fund by Connecticut DOT, includes a new traffic signal at the intersection of Route 161. It's also, improves LED, or, I'm sorry, LPI, leading pedestrian interval phasing and accessible pedestrian signals, which will enhance that intersection. And it also provides a dedicated northbound left-turn lane and a bicycle box at the Roxbury Road signal, which was recommended. I don't know if we'll get that, that far, but...
I don't think we're going anywhere that far down.
Down toward Roxbury Road. So, I'll bring Alex. I'll let him have the mic, and he can go through the proposed plan. This highlights the location of the sidewalk along East Pat.
Good evening, everybody. So, I'm Alex Close, and the town engineer for East Line. Been the town engineer since 2021. Been living in the area since 2017. I'm very happy to be here with this project. So, I just wanna kind of get you caught up to where we are today and how we got here. So, about, it was actually like two years ago, with actually the previous Board of Selectmen, there is a, a, a notice to make applications for this Lozit funding, local transportation capital improvement funding, which is a 100% fund from the state of Connecticut. It's a competitive grant process, so it's not, it's not a loan or anything like that. It's actually a full grant. It's competitive. And we applied through our Cog, our Council of Government, Southeastern Cog. This was open to all the Council of Governments and all municipalities in the state of Connecticut. And there were various projects that were funded. So, how we're here today is that we looked at, this, this funding was specifically to promote multimodal and safe pedestrian access, was the purpose of this, this funding. And the Plan of Conservation Development from 2020, which the Planning Commission identified some key areas around town. A gentleman who spoke today about the 156 connection, for example, is in there. Connections on Bossa Post Road, connections on 161, and this East Patagonic Road connection. East Patagonic, Patagonic Road, last time I looked, had an average daily traffic of 5,500 cars, as all of you who are here probably live in the area can understand. It is one of the few municipal-owned roads that's actually a collector, up there with Roxbury Road and, I think possibly Dean Road, and some of these other, Old Black Point, Giant's Neck, some of these other roads that are either, serve a large community, and it's their main in-and-out to the state route, or, in the case of East Pat, it serves as a bypass so you can get around downtown. Right? So, significant number of traffic, mixed with the fact that the road is very narrow and it's very old. Okay? And as you know, they have the sidewalk on the west side, and it only goes up to the, I think it's Bush Hill. But mainly, it's a stretch past the cemetery, past the school and past the cemetery that's there. And that sidewalk that's there, particularly along the cemetery, is only three feet wide. So, even though there is a sidewalk, you still don't feel very comfortable, right? And it's not very friendly to those who need accessible accommodations either. Right? So, we identified this, and it fits some of the other scoping criteria that we felt would be really competitive. And our Cog felt that this project would be really competitive for the grant. So, we approached the previous Board of Selectmen. We put in, we said, hey, we would like to apply for this. We're gonna do, you know, the town is gonna do the design ourselves, 'cause the design is not covered. We want to use our engineering department, use some of our time to work towards this and make an application. We feel like we can be competitive. Previous board said, go ahead. Previous first selectmen signed the application. We sent it in, and we actually did get a commitment to fund, which is essentially promising, if you finish the design drawings and you put it out to bid, and it comes, you know, close to the amount of money that you think it's gonna cost, we are going to, it's a promise that they are going to actually fund, that the state of Connecticut is going to fund this project. So, at that time, we feel like, okay, before, we weren't sure we were gonna get the money. And now, we feel like, okay, the state has said, they're gonna give us some money. So, now, I am in the process of actually finishing the construction documents, which will go back to the Cog, back to the DOT for review. And once they're happy with it, we'll put it out to bid to a contractor, and we'll award the project and move into construction. So, that's where we are today. So, we have not finalized the design. I would say that we're very close to what we believe is the most practicable design possible, based on going out there and doing preliminary survey and preliminary study. So, it's not that this is said and done, and this is exactly what's gonna be built. But this is what the engineering office feels, Public Works feels, is the best way, if you will, the most efficient and the most practical way to put in this sidewalk. So, the plan says we want a sidewalk from 161 to 156. That's your elected commission. That's your planning commission, your Board of Selectmen. They go to our office and say, hey, we want to make this project happen. We try to figure out how to make it happen. And ideally, like in this case, it can cost a ton of money, which is great. So, I have a few slides here that show kind of a colored section of the proposed work on top of an aerial where the existing work is. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna walk through the proposed plan from 161 all the way down to 156. I want to preface this today to say, at the end, there should be a slide that has both Gary and I's email and phone number. Okay? Please reach out to us after this if you have more questions, comments, and concerns, particularly if you are a resident who lives on the western side, where we're proposing to put the sidewalk. And even more, particularly if you do see some of this kind of green space, that means that's actually an area on your property that we are going to be, hopefully, working out an easement to do some construction. We're gonna need some grading to be restored, you know, taking out grass, adding some, putting grass back in.
Alex, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but are there copies of this available that the public could take with them?
We can definitely make them available on the website. I'm sorry, I don't have any printed copies today. But what I'll do is, I can take all of these plans, and I can put them up on our website. And I can also have some printed out in our office, and people can come and get hard copies.
I'd be more than willing to give my copy and...
If someone wants to take this with them.
Sure. Yep, and we'll, and I'll still, I'm still gonna get it put up on our website, and I'll still print copies and have them available in the public works office as well after this. Or you can even make a few copies, Sandy. Okay. So, and if you're listening online, you're, you're not here, you're gonna be watching the recording or reading the minutes, don't worry. Anybody whose property is gonna be affected outside of the right-of-way, and pretty much everybody who lives on the west side of the road, we are also gonna be reaching out to you individually to have a case-by-case basis about your property. And if you'd just like to know and have an understanding of, okay, hey, I live on this side of the road, what is this gonna look like? You can take my email, take my phone number, and we can schedule a meeting, and I can go out to, you know, the front of your home, and I can actually walk through what I anticipate this to look like when the construction is done, too. So, I want to just be very clear that this is a presentation to kind of give you the information while I work through the final plans. And I'm hoping to actually individually reach out to everybody between now and a couple months from now, when I actually finish the plan, and before I submit them to the DOT for review. That is my goal here, to have an understanding of any resident that has any concerns, that we've worked out the concerns of what this is gonna look like in front of, or in a couple of cases on your property. In most cases, it'll just be in front of your property along the roadway. So, that's the intention of today's presentation, and I plan on handling this stuff on a, Gary and I both plan on handling further conversations on a case-by-case basis with the property owners. So, I just hope that's kind of clear for everybody. I'm trying to be as transparent as possible. If you have my information, we can set up a meeting. We can talk on the phone. We can talk on the email. We can talk in person and figure it out. So, okay, that was a lot, and we've been here a little while. So, on 161, starting there, we're gonna move our way south. So, yes, we are proposing to do a signal upgrade, new pedestrian push-button signals, a crossing from the west to east side of East Patagonic, and a new crossing with a new signal, new ramps to the existing crosswalk that goes across Route 161, which would connect it to the crosswalk that would actually get you back downtown to Niantic and up towards the Gorton Pond area. So, if we move south, a couple of the reasons we chose to put the sidewalk on the west side of the road, the utilities switch back and forth, but it's not really practical, and it's not really the safest option to continuously put a lot of crosswalks to get people back and forth across the road. The existing sidewalk actually already starts on the west side of the road. And another very large reason we chose the west side is because it's much easier to do this construction, a lot less disruptive, to do this in a fill scenario than it would be to a cut scenario. So, a lot of properties on the east side of the road has a very steep slope up the side, and there's not as much shoulder, where overall, and that may not be the case for every property, but overall, on the west side, the shoulder's a little bit wider, a little bit flatter, and it's a lot easier to bring in some fill than it is to put in a cut situation where we have to chase it up and possibly put in a retaining wall. We're proposing to do this project now, as long as it's amiable with all homeowners, to do this without any kind of retaining wall or other infrastructure that would need to be, you know, under town funds, repaired and maintained in the future, versus just putting a sidewalk in and essentially just putting grass next to it, which, in the long run, without having any kind of retaining wall, railing system, or anything like that, would be a lot less expensive in the long run. The other thing I'd like to point out is that at no point is the sidewalk gonna pitch back towards anyone's property. So, the sidewalk has been designed the way we always typically design sidewalks, which is a very minor, minor slope towards the roadway. So, when it rains, the water hits the sidewalk, and the water goes out and in through the road storm system. It does not bring the water back onto people's property. So, that's another consideration. But we just felt that we could do it where we keep the sidewalk consistently on the west side of the road, rather than in a couple spots bringing it back and forth. That just really didn't make a lot of sense for several of those reasons that we've identified. And again, we can certainly go out and take a look at your property, and I want to come up with a solution that works for everybody. It just makes the most sense. It doesn't waste any money. It's maintainable in the future, and everybody's happy with it. That's, that's my goal here. So, you will see that the most amount of encroachment that we would like to work out with the residents is actually going to be in the northernmost side, because that is where it's steepest, and it drops down towards the river. And as we work our way south, you'll see there's a lot of properties that we can do all of our construction completely within the right-of-way. We may just have to repair and restore a little bit of your driveway apron, so we can get the sidewalk through the driveway. But we would completely repair your apron from the edge of the road down into your driveway, around the sidewalk. So, all of this green that you see, so the brown is the sidewalk, and we'll get you colored prints as well. The brown is the sidewalk. The dark gray is the new asphalt, which you'll see some gray color on some of the driveways here as well. And the green is the limits of the grading that we believe we would need to chase this back. So, what this means is you have your sidewalk, and you have kind of the slope that goes for a lot of these properties down towards the property. We wouldn't be making it, you know, our goal wouldn't be to make it any steeper, but simply to shift the slope that you have back a couple of feet to make that available width for the sidewalk. Normally, if we had a wider road, I would actually narrow the road. But as you all know, East Pat is already a pretty narrow road in a lot of these spots. And there are a couple of sections of roadway that we will be realigning, particularly when we get to it at the cemetery, 'cause obviously, I cannot encroach any further on the cemetery. I have to actually shift the road a little bit to the other side. So, as we kind of work our way down south, you'll see, like, immediately to the next slide here, which this is property number 100, East Patagonic, is where this matchline is on the bottom. And then, we move over to number 98. You can see a lot of that green is already gone, which means that we feel like along all of these properties, we actually have enough room in the existing right-of-way to put our sidewalk in, do a little bit of grading, and we don't really feel like it's going to encroach on anyone's property. We're proposing a five-foot-wide sidewalk, and where it's monolithic up against the edge of the road, we would do five feet with a five-inch curb. So, there, we are trying to keep the sidewalk with a snowshelf or a grass buffer. That's just not the case everywhere, because we just don't have the right-of-way width that we'd like to do that. So, there are a lot of areas of the sidewalk that will have to be against the road, and we'll provide five and a half feet in those areas. So, you can see this gets us to Bush Hill Drive, and actually then continues south past Bush Hill Drive. We have another couple of properties, number 80 and 78, that are, again, are pretty steep. And not only are they pretty steep, but where we believe the right-of-way, a lot of these points of the right-of-way, we've already gone out and surveyed and identified and recovered some pins. So, that's another thing when we're working in front of your property, we'll identify exactly where the right-of-way line is. So, very quickly, so everybody understands, 'cause this is a common misconception in town, you don't own right up to the edge of the pavement. All new developments, we have a 50-foot right-of-way, typically anywhere between a 24 and 30-foot road. So, about 10 feet off the edge of the pavement is the town's right-of-way for public use such as sidewalks, et cetera. This East Patagonic is a very, very, very old road, which means that the road is not right in the middle of the right-of-way, and it means that the right-of-way actually varies a little bit in width from place to place, just because of how old it is, which is another challenge that we kind of face here. So, you'll see where number 80 and 78 are. There's, again, a little bit of encroachment, where we would be asking for essentially a temporary construction easement to say, hey, we'd like to come in and build the sidewalk. We're gonna restore everything nice. We're gonna make sure that the grass grows. We're gonna restore your pavement. And in almost every property, and I'd have to look at this again on a case-by-case basis and see exactly where the right-of-way is, almost every property, we do not anticipate the sidewalk remaining on anyone's property. We're just looking at a construction agreement or construction easement. There may be a couple of properties where we will reach out, and we'd like to get an easement from you that the sidewalk would be on your property. And this is for everyone in the audience, everyone listening, and for the, and for the meeting minutes. We will definitely work with you a case-by-case basis on that, if we feel that the sidewalk is gonna actually be on your property. And of course, like all sidewalks in the town of East Line, the town will take full responsibility for maintenance of the sidewalk, plowing of the sidewalk, which we already do for everything. So, it's not, don't feel like it's on your property, I have to take care of it. The easement would clearly spell out that the town is responsible, and you're actually giving us permission, you're giving the public permission to pass on this piece of concrete that would just be grazing like a couple feet into your, your property. And again, we'll handle those kind of on a case-by-case. But for most people, we feel that we can actually construct the right-of-way completely with, I'm just gonna construct the sidewalk completely within the right-of-way, and the sidewalk will remain once completed, completely within the right-of-way. So, there's nothing you have to worry about there. This is number 76 and 74, a little bit of grading down around this curve. That gets us down to Brook Road. And, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. I think it's about, around Brook Road, the existing side, it's a little, right, just before there. I mixed up Brook and Bush earlier. I misspoke there, I'm sorry. Yeah, just before there. Yeah, just before that. So that gets us to where the existing sidewalk is, but as Gary stated, you know, it's not very friendly for accessibility, it's not very comfortable for people walking, it's very narrow, it's very old. So of course, we're going to restore that to our modern sidewalk standards and bring that all the way to 156. Redoing the crossing at Lakeview Drive that's existing there to service them with some new yield signage. So cars are aware that they're coming around, they'll see the yield teeth, the dragon's teeth, we sometimes call them, and have the signage for that crossing as well. That gets us to right in front of the cemetery. As I said, we're very clear, we would not, you know, we're not gonna touch the cemetery wall, but we do wanna provide a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk there against the road. So this is an area where we would actually be looking at shifting the road's centerline very slightly. I do know that it is around a curve. I have done the study around the curve and the amount that we're shifting, we're talking by just a couple of feet, it's not actually going to change the visibility of the vehicles that are coming around that corner. So we're just looking at a slight shift there to accommodate the walk without having any disruption to the cemetery. We've already submitted this project and gotten clearance from DEEP, the Natural Diversity Database, that they don't expect any negative impacts to wildlife here. I am waiting for the results of the SHPO, which, what does that stand for, the State Archaeological Review Preservation Office? Yes, thank you. There's a lot of acronyms in this business, I'm sorry, but I've already filled out the application and sent in the paperwork for their review as well. So in particular, they're probably gonna be paying attention to the cemetery area, but they're gonna be reviewing the whole corridor as well. So as long as that comes back all clear, they don't anticipate any issues. We should have no problem with the construction adjacent to the cemetery either. And then again, another striping of, the restriping of the crossing at Hope Street. I'd like to put in new ramps on the corners of Hope Street as well, because the ramps that are there are not really in good shape. And no yield here because this is already designated as an always-stop, so we'd maintain the always-stop at the crossing. And then we would actually run the sidewalk on the east side as a continuation of the new ramps that the DOT already put in at the intersection of 156. So you could actually get from the east side coming down 156 to the crossing at Hope Street and go down to the other side as well, because from Hope Street, we pick up the rest of the crossing that goes back into Niantic and some of the other residential neighborhoods along Hope Street and Lake Abbot and things like that. So that's kind of the overview of this and some of the reasonings behind it. I think we should have a slide with our contact information. So email is best if you can, because we're, both Gary and I, in and out of the office a lot doing construction inspections and things like that. So that way, we can get your message clearly and we can respond to you clearly. However, of course, if you wanna call our office number, please call it, leave a message, I'll call you back. We can set up a meeting in person if you'd like to discuss any, you know, particular concerns or anything like that. But my goal is, over the next couple of months, to kinda tighten up this design and finish it to get it in front of DOT's review. And once they get us the approval and we're happy and we've heard feedback from any residents and we're not worried there's any other outstanding issues and the board of selectmen's happy, we'll take that final design and that'll actually go up to bid to construct the project. In a perfect, perfect world, I would have the bid package done this winter and we could possibly look at construction next year, but with all of the review times and things like that, it's quite possible that we'd be looking at a construction not in the calendar year 2025, but possibly 2026. It could be as early as next year if we can, if everything comes back with all the various reviews without comments and everybody's happy with it, then it could be as early as next year. The last piece I'll say about this is the road piece. It is a full-depth reconstruction and repave of the entire road, particularly because of the alignment, but also because of lining with the sidewalk and the road itself. Connecticut Standards is they wanna leave a load sip project with a road that has a 20-year lifespan, so in our case, that would warrant a full-depth reconstruction. We're gonna propose to do that through a reclamation, which means that we're going to take a big grinding machine and grind the pavement down into the base of the road, which is gonna act as the new road base. We're gonna compact that, put brand-new pavement on top of that. We would do one lane at a time and the base would be compacted. So at all times, you'll still be able to use East Pat and get in and out and that sort of thing. There may be some delays and there may be a period of time where you're driving on that compacted base material, but it will be safe to drive, to drive slowly like you would through any construction zone. But that means it's gonna be a fairly quick process to get a brand-new asphalt road because we're not actually removing all of the asphalt in the base and then having to fill all that back in. We're essentially going to have a train of the grinding process and the rolling process immediately behind that and then paving behind that. So it's gonna be, we've had a lot of success in town with full-depth reclamation and most neighborhoods, we're in and out of the neighborhood in like a matter of a few days to a week. This is like a one-mile stretch, so in this case, it would probably take a few weeks to do the whole road. But you know, there's not gonna be an extended period of time where you have to worry about, oh, I can't, you know, I live on Bush Hill, I live on Brook, I can't get into my neighborhood or anything like that. You will be able to traverse the road during the construction period as well, we're gonna fail to do it that way. And that's really all I can think of presentation-wise. You have our contact information, definitely reach out, except particularly if you do live in a, on the west side where the sidewalk is proposed. I wanna hear from anybody, but I really wanna hear from you and I wanna make sure that when the project is said and done, that you as a resident, you know, with this thing in front of your property, that you're gonna be happy with it. That's all I have here. If you have anything else or any questions from the board.
I appreciate your presentation. It's a really important project. Really impressed by the work, the engineering department. You guys really did a wonderful job on this.
Thank you.
And we're lucky to have that depth and expertise in our town. Not every town does, so thank you very much and this is something that's being anticipated, it's consistent with, you know, connectivity with the sidewalks and it's really great. It's a great project. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Both of you, appreciate it. Any other comments?
Alex, two questions. The first, when it was first introduced, it was talked about no bike lanes. There was none of room for bike lanes.
Yes.
But yet, line two here, it says, bike lane systems. Creation of safe sidewalk and bike lane system.
Don, that may refer into the plan itself for the Route 161 corridor, which like we do have overall as a town, we'd wanna incorporate bike lanes, but on East Pat itself, there's definitely not enough width to put in a bike lane.
Because I made that known at our ex officio meeting, that there was not gonna be bike lanes.
Not on this project.
Okay.
We are working with Federal Highway and the COG to look at doing either a bike lane or some sort of share ride system on 156 as part of a greater, not just our town, but greater like long-term biking connection system. And there are definitely other routes in town that the planning commission has identified that they wanna have bike lanes, but while we did review it on East Pat, we just feel like it's just not a comfortable place to put it. And, you know, it's not a way that we can implement a bike lane safely.
I just wanna make sure that somebody's gonna say, hey, wait, he said no bike lanes. Last, small minutia, but trashcans are gonna go on the sidewalk?
That's a great question, right, Mike Liberty, in the pursuit of your, the refuse collection here. And that's a great question, I don't have an answer for you right now, but I'm sure Joe and I can discuss and we'll figure out, this will not be the only location in town that we have a monolithic sidewalk right up against the roadway, so I will get back to you with an answer on that.
Pencil on.
Something to think about, absolutely. And mailboxes are something we're thinking about as well in terms of, in some areas, we may need to make the sidewalk a little bit wider, can we put the mailbox in the snow shelf? Potentially, if it's adjacent to a crosswalk and people feel safe, is it possible to put the mailbox on the other side? It's not something that we wanna try to do, we wanna try to make it in the best configuration possible, but mailboxes are something we have to contend with. And I think we've got all our fire hydrants covered and utility poles. We should be all set with the layout of hydrants and utility poles. But yes, mailboxes and garbage are definitely, are gonna be a big challenge and we'll figure it out.
I have a question about the funding.
Yes.
This came through LoTIP.
Yes.
Is that something that your department had to prioritize and then work with the COG? Or is that something that you, just as a department, were able to put out there and make it happen?
Sure. So we're constantly working on projects in various stages, some smaller projects and larger projects. So going after grant money, sometimes we're awarded grants, sometimes we're not. We try to really just, because we don't have like a grant writer on stock or anything like that, so I work with Gary and myself and some others, but primarily Gary and myself, the planning and engineering department work together to put together grant packages that we think we're gonna be competitive for. And that, you know, usually running by the first selectman of the board and saying, hey, we wanna spend some time to work on this. But we're constantly working on future projects, whether that's gonna be something we can get money for or something that's a town-funded project, you know, out of one of our capital accounts. So it's just, it's part of the business of what we do with staff is, you know, sometimes we're in execution of a project and doing inspections and actually, you know, making the construction happen. And sometimes we're in the planning stages, like in this case, where we're working on plans and submitting for the grant. We just felt, reading our POCD and talking to the COG, we felt like we'd be really competitive for this and it turns out we were because we were able to get the money. So something we felt was a good use of staff's time to work on this project.
That's great. I'm just curious about the LoTIP because once it's awarded, there has to be like an integrated approach, I'm guessing through finance and planning to make something happen. And so everyone has to be on board or is it just your department that was pushing this forward?
So I wanna make sure I understand your question correctly. Are you saying in terms of how the project will be funded once awarded?
You know, I should probably speak to you guys afterwards.
Yeah.
Because this is a complicated technical, financial matter that I don't think anyone here really cares about.
Yeah.
So if you guys wouldn't mind sticking around, perhaps I could deal with that.
Yeah, we can stick around after this. If we can't address your questions, I'm sure Kevin and I can set up a meeting to kinda, but I'll just say that it is a grant from the state that they opened up, so there are other towns that won projects and that the state is going to essentially fund what's, we're gonna put this project down to bid and the bid is gonna cover the entire scope of all the construction, not the design, we're doing the design mostly in-house. But the construction portion that we actually, when we get the results back from the bid, that is the money that the state has essentially promised, that they're going to pay that money for the project. But we can talk about the specifics of that.
Yeah, offline, I'm sorry.
Yep.
So it's not where Eastslim puts out the money and then the state reimburses, they actually pay for it?
I don't want to misspeak. I believe with LoTIP, I, no, I believe with LoTIP, they may, I think they may actually fund the bid on that one, but I would definitely wanna make sure I don't misspeak, I talked to Kevin, I read the rules on that one in terms of how that exchange happens, because I don't wanna give you the wrong answer.
Do you know?
Without reading the grant guidance off that particular, there's so many grants that the state has to dedicate, some are reimbursable, yeah. Some are reimbursable, like at the end of the project, and some, they give the money and then they ask for like a, an audit, like a true-up. I'm not quite sure what LoTIP does.
So each one is separate and you have to read?
Yeah, every grant, yeah, you have to read the grant guidance.
Okay, understood.
I believe this is one that has a project plan and the state actually pays it out because it is such a, you know, it's gonna be a substantial-sized project. That's what I believe, but I cannot guarantee that's the case, but we can confirm that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you again, appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, great. Yeah, so you have our, I'm gonna put our contact info up there for everybody one more time. And to reach out to us if any questions, I will put this slide deck up on our town engineering website. And, you know, for anyone who's listening online or reading the minutes after, please come, come talk to us. And we're gonna try to, as I said, get ahold of everybody. If they're not here and they didn't see this and then we don't want anybody be sidelined by this, Gary and I are gonna try to get ahold of the residents individually and make sure we're, everybody's on the same page.
Great.
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
If you, you know, I mean, we're gonna be a little bit while longer, so.
We'll talk some other time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alex, appreciate it. All right, so now, discussion and possible action on services to community budget, this has been kind of a thing that's been kicking around, what's that?
It's like a can kicking around.
Yeah, and so the background is that, you know, we had proposed a certain amount, roughly 41,000, 616, that was the, let's see, what was this year? No, 40?
So the initial amount, Dan, was 45,974?
That's it, 45,974. And it was cut back to, it was reduced by 21,000, so we're left with 20,324, which we have, our job is to decide what we're gonna do with that money, are we, how are we gonna reallocate it and what methodology should we use to reallocate it? We do have letters from the various, some of the various entities that were requesting money. I think one of the things we talked about and was, you know, maybe we need to have a process to evaluate each one of these requests. Some are, you know, a little bit more than others and so are there any suggestions or feelings on how we might approach it? One idea is, is to give them a pro-rata, you know, what, the amount that we had approved, reduce it by the amount that we, the total budget was reduced, roughly, you know, a little, little bit under 50%. Or we can go through and evaluate each one and make a decision how much we wanna give to each entity, so we end up with a total amount of 20,324.
What was the total amount again, sorry?
So we have available to dole out is $20,324.
And that was because it was caught by the Board of Finance?
Yeah, we originally, our request was 45,974.
Right.
Yeah, and then it was cut to 20,000.
Have we gone through to see how much each group is asking for? And total that up?
Yeah, so let me just, the department requests, wait a minute, I'm trying, the Board of Selectmen budget was 41,774, is that right?
Can I walk through the numbers real quick?
Yeah, if you would, all right, so we're all clear.
So everyone, halfway through your packet, there's two, there's one that has the black bar across the top.
Yeah.
That's from our budget workbooks. So the initial requests came in at about 45,000, well, yeah, 45,974.
Yeah.
First selectmen cut a couple, down to 22,000 to 43,774. Board of Selectmen made an adjustment to move coalition.
Kevin, you, I'm trying to catch up to you, I'm like not anywhere close.
Go right to the front, right here.
No, the black bar on the top.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go back to this one here.
It's page, Agenda 3B.
It's my last page.
No, doesn't exist.
Why don't we just make a couple of copies?
Okay, while the copies are being made, the story of this is, we got all the requests, put them together, and it was 45,974.
To the best of my ability, yeah. Some of them, I know the Family Services Association, I believe after we put in the budget, I think they asked for either 13,000 or 18,000. Theirs was a little higher, but the other ones, that's, that was their asks.
And now, the Board of Finance has said we have to reduce it to 20,27.
They did.
324, they reduced it.
They cut, yeah.
Can I just know as to why they reduced it? Does anybody know why they reduced it?
I think they're just responsibility to taxpayer to try and find savings.
No, they reduced it because there's no policy or process.
Okay.
That's why.
Well, I'm not, it's not our place to question the wisdom of the Board of Finance.
To my knowledge, that's exactly why. So, okay, that's to my knowledge.
So.
I think that's accurate.
You think that's accurate?
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Dan, but I believe it's because there's no policy here that's created.
So are you suggesting we take their advice?
I suggest that we create a policy and process to how we're allocating money. And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, so the conversation started at budget time and the conversation started with a question from Ann that was really, really good. and the conversation started with a question from Ann that was really, really good. It prompted dialogue here about how we are allocating money, the taxpayers' money, to nonprofits by us. And the question is, is that really up to us to be doing? And it was a great question. So then from there, being new, I said, well, how do you make the list? And Roseanne gave us a great amount of information as to how it all began, but there is no process, there's no policy that's attached to it. So it started with one or two or three, and now has gotten so large that it's forty-five thousand dollars. So I had suggested a process to create a policy, and to my knowledge, it was cut because there is not. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's what I recall the whole, the whole thing came to, and now we've been cut twenty to twenty, and now, okay, so we either allocate the money, but there's still no policy or process in how to do that.
So, just to keep things in, in perspective, uh, this amount of money that we requested was less than one percent of the total overall bullet budget, and while I do appreciate the fact that there's no policy, um, is our task here right now to allocate this money, or is it to stop the conversation and work with Board of Finance to come up with a policy? I don't know what our options are.
Yeah, we, we don't work with the Board of Finance with this, this is, for us, they, that is what they gave us, that, that is set in stone, that was already passed.
For this year, so rather than let these people hang, we have to prorate the money that they asked for?
We, we have to divvy, divvy it up some way, because that's the money we have.
Okay.
So we're to divvy up the twenty.
Yeah, but I think what, what Candace is saying, and I think she's right, I think we do need going forward to make a process. My, my initial concern was, you know, a lot of people, and people have told me this, you know, they give money to their different groups, so is it really right for us to take taxpayers' money and give it to other people?
Agreed.
Now, I do remember Roseanne saying there were certain groups in town, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was the, like, the, um.
Veteran's mileage?
Yes, exactly, veterans' mileage, like something like that, or like something that, you know what I mean, that we are getting a benefit from them, you know what I mean? Um, there's, there's certain ones like that.
Roseanne, can you speak to that?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Um, so, as I said many moons ago, yeah, you know, we were a smaller town, this started, this has been an ongoing process ever, ever since I, I can remember, and so there's a, there's a letter of request, and the board made the decision as to whether or not this request benefited the majority of the town. And also the question of, if we don't do it, whose job is it to do it, or does it not get done at all? So we operated under a very simple process. Unfortunately, when, this time around, when we got it, I think I just assumed that, hey, this is what we've done. And so we didn't get initially the request letters attached. So, uh, that's just, so some of these things, for instance, the, um, the veterans thing is a good example. Um, should this be reflected someplace else in the budget? Because the person that this, or the organization that this goes to, this person, Dan, you can address that, the veterans, the veterans' rep mileage, why don't we use that for an example?
Right, well, so he, uh, the fellow that is involved with that, he, he drives the veterans to, uh, medical appointments that they need to get to, that don't have another, a good way to get there, and, uh, we reimburse them for his mileage and expenses. And that's an important service that, that he provides, or in effect, we're providing to the veterans. So that's a pretty high priority, I think, on this list.
Oh, sure. So if we take this out of the budget, either this person who's a volunteer, uses his own car, et cetera, et cetera, then are we going to find money someplace else in the budget for this? At this point, we can't do that, because the budget's set. Uh, some of the others, um, you know, you might, I think, uh, you know, for each of these, do we want these people to come in and present a case to us? We've done that in the past, uh, where they've actually, during budget session, we've had them come in and make the requests personally.
I think that would be formulating a policy, wouldn't it? That, that would be saying, this is what we want you to do, do it, and then you receive the money. So that would be policy-wise. My view is that we have this pot of money, we have these people who have asked, we've been, the money that we asked for, or budgeted for, was decreased by about fifty-six percent. Could we decrease all of their requests fifty-six percent?
Right, too.
Do it equitably this year, at the meantime, go for developing some kind of policy, like what you had said, come before us, present, do a letter.
I would be in agreement with that, as far as where we're at.
I think that's a fair, as a one-time thing.
Right now, because I think it's fair, because this is, because this is what we have in front of us, but moving forward for the next budget season, we must adopt a policy, a process.
If the Board of Finance is asking, or basically telling us, this is free money that we're handing out for taxpayers, that, that might not want money to go to this charity, that, that should be up to an individual supporter of the, the vet mileage thing. Somebody else step up and say, look, I, I got money, I can, I can take, I can, I can send him a check for that. Is the Board of Finance trying to send a signal saying, we can't, we can't take care of all these? Well, I mean, I, I think Candace really explained it very well, but, um, their, their concern was, you know, you're doling out this money without a, without a process.
And that's what was stated, and that's at least what I recall from the, is the public hearing, or the, right before.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's my recollection as well, is that was, you know, that was their concern. So, and also, I mean, they were trying to find places to cut money, but this was a legitimate place in their mind. And, um, but the criticism was that, you know, you, you don't have a process. And so, um, I, I, you know, I think you're right, that we have to have a procedure and a process. Um, the problem for us right now is that there are these groups that are sort of expecting and were relying on getting this money.
Sure, yeah, and they are waiting, they're, they're, we don't want to make them anymore.
And they're waiting. We don't want to hold them up, so, um, if I'm hearing you correctly, and I think I agree with that, is, look, why don't we, tonight, if we can, agree to give them a prorated distribution, you, Jason, forty-four percent?
No, fifty-six percent.
What was it?
Forty-four percent, it's been reduced by fifty-six percent.
Oh, forgive me, okay.
So we give them forty-four percent of what they had requested, and then we do a better, uh, we do a better job next time. We, we have a few months now to start working on, uh, a process, uh, to make it work fairly. And we have some time, hopefully, in September and October, to work on that and, and get it together, so.
I think that that's fair.
Do you think that's, are you?
I don't think, I don't think anybody could really argue with that either, you know, sorry, I couldn't do this, but we could do this.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that way, it's kind of fair across the board, uh, we're not holding people up that we're counting on something, and then, um, we'll, we'll try to do better. And, you know, we'll, we'll take seriously the comments of Board Finance and our, and comments here, and, uh, so.
Okay, just a couple of these, um, the Family Service Association, that is kind of prorated as our part to a regional organization. I can't find the request letter here, I'm looking for it. Um, I'm a little worried about that one, that's a regional commitment. Um, somebody else, can somebody else find that in the packet?
Roseanne, do you know if that's, did that get renamed Youth, uh, Y C F S? Because I did not see anything for Family Services, so I'm assuming that was Y C, uh, U C F S? Because I, I don't see another one for U C F S, so I'm thinking that was the.
So can I just get clarification from Roseanne, if you don't mind? Are you saying that for some of these, we have a certain requirement, and that we wouldn't be meeting the requirement of money?
Right, that, uh, this is, for instance, I know Family Service is the one that stands out. Uh, we contributed to the homeless shelter and London Hospitality Center, because we don't have one, so our residents go there if they need it. Uh, some of the other things, you know, I think are a little more, perhaps, I don't want to say whimsical, but it doesn't involve people's health or lives.
Okay, right.
Like, U C F S healthcare, I mean, they're requesting twenty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
Right, which we, which we didn't give.
But it did not go to a different budget? Is that what you were saying, Kevin?
No, I think, I think, to the best of my knowledge, that Family Service Association is U C F S. To the best of my knowledge, like, I think that's the, the sixty-three hundred in the budget correlates to that twenty-six three thirty.
So someone left off of twenty thousand dollars.
Someone left off of two, twenty.
It's, it's, the year before, it, we gave sixty-three hundred, and their request was, I believe, eighteen thousand. I think it's always, then, I don't like that, to the, as long as I.
Perhaps, since we don't have our house in order, perhaps the best way to do it is to go for it with the forty-four percent, or whatever reduction we agreed to, and then if people say, oh, no, no, you have to do this, we'll say, okay, come present at the board meeting.
And then we have to ask for special requests from the Board of Finance?
Yeah, something like, yes.
Yeah, we'll find a way.
We have to do something else.
Otherwise, there's no way to get our arms around this.
Yeah.
One, one line, Adam, please, of two thousand dollars that the Board of Selectmen removed from the Youth Coalition Scholarship Fund, that was, we totally admit, eliminated that. Third from the bottom.
It was moved to, uh, the Youth Serp, Youth Commission.
Yeah, it was moved.
Yeah, it was moved.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so I guess, just.
So the forty-four percent proposed, I just changed that top number.
Okay.
Because before it was forty-eight, forty-eight point six five to tie it out, so if we did forty-four, uh, we would, we would appropriate eighteen thousand three eighty, which would leave about nineteen hundred and sixty dollars.
Could we keep that in a reserve in case someone said, oh, my gosh, we know, we need you to contribute, otherwise the homeless hospitality center is going to shut down tomorrow, and we provide.
Well, how, how do we have extra left over if we?
Uh, because the appropriation, uh, the total amount was forty-eight point six five percent, and, uh, Mr. Diebel said forty-four percent, so that'll leave about five percent in, uh, contingency within this budget line, right, within this services, the community line.
Because there's a little contingency, if there is one that's particularly in trouble because of, of, of this weekend.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So, just another follow-up question, when we're saying put policy and procedure into place, so would we then form like a subcommittee, like, to review it and then kind of present to the board?
Sounds like.
Or is that something that, or is there?
We don't have to make an ordinance, right, because this is all through the budget.
No.
No, you don't make an ordinance, but I just didn't know exactly.
It should just be a policy, come up with a.
Maybe much like a, a scholarship application.
Yeah, some kind of process.
I know that Youth and Family just adopted one. They just adopted a, um, very simple, um, policy for when they are giving money.
Well, I think we've got to figure out how to do it.
Just something very simple, that was done by the commission, and they voted on it. It's just something that we have.
Something, okay.
Our own internal policy.
That we are in agreement with, that when, um, money is being requested from us, that this is what we're looking at, and this is how money is being given out.
So, no, these are the procedures, and these are the, what we're looking at.
And this is our policy, overarching policy.
And this is how we do it, okay.
So I don't think we need a commission, right? I think we can just come up with it, and maybe a couple of us get together.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just to understand it.
Come to an agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so then.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Dan, the one question I had, I just, and, and maybe Roseanne would know, the Eastline Student Government Scholarship, I believe that's for a thousand dollars, I don't know if there's a contract we signed with them, or exactly what, off the top of my head, so I just want to make sure we're not short-changed.
Find out, if we give them less than they would.
No, there's, well.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, just wanted to make sure.
You know, this is pretty awkward, we're going to award a scholarship for nine hundred and seventy-three, nine dollars, you know, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars or something.
Well, we've got a problem, and we got to try to do it fairly, and for this year, that's what it'll be.
Yeah.
So.
They don't like it, they can turn it away, give it back to us.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to do the, you know, we got, we got, we got a little bit surprised here, and, uh, but there's some legitimate, uh, concerns that need to be addressed, and, so right now, we got to be expedient, I think, and do what we can do, and then try to do better next year.
Should I make a motion on this?
Yeah, yeah.
Did I, do I have one?
I don't, we don't have one, but, uh, do I think you have it?
Can I make a motion that we prorate the, okay, that we prorate the fiscal year twenty-five department requests of forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars, each item be reduced to forty-four percent of the original request, totaling?
I think it's going to be the forty-one seven seventy-four, isn't it? Because that was the Board of Selectmen budget.
Do you got to get the numbers?
Okay, oh. The number is, the number to appropriate, uh, if we're doing the forty-four percent, is eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Of the forty-five or of the forty-one?
There's only, there was only, um, there was only available twenty thousand two, twenty thousand three twenty-four. So the, the original was forty-five, but that didn't get budgeted. The budget amount was twenty-three twenty-four.
And you're saying if we take the Board of Selectmen budget, the forty-one seven seventy-four, reduce that by, to, by forty-four percent?
That's already, that's already happened. The, the only budget to look at, let me just fix this real quick. This is the, um, sorry, let me just, under, so this is the, like, this is the budget currently, right here on the screen, it's just that twenty thousand three twenty-four right now, and everything else was zeroed out by the Board of Finance, so this is what it looks like, so if you're going to vote to, you know, appropriate it to the other lines, um, you could say as, as, as exhibited.
But it goes down to eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty?
Correct, and they'll leave a balance of nineteen thousand, oh, I'm sorry, nineteen hundred forty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Was that eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty even?
And fifty-six cents.
Okay, that's what this, the numbers are.
Kevin, I'm not getting the same numbers as you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not following that.
I, I, yeah, I get lost.
I'm the finance guy.
So, I'm saying, if we base off, they asked for forty-five.
No, 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 you're, you're, so what happened was, the Board of Finance only gave us twenty thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Yes.
We don't, you, you, the, the other number, the forty-five, is gone.
No.
But we want to.
Jason, I see what you're saying now, I see what you're saying now.
But here's my logic, listen, forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-four is what they asked for. We were given twenty-three two four. Twenty-three two four is forty-four percent of forty-five nine seven four. So if you reduce all of their requests by point four four, or times point four four, or forty-four percent of that, it should add up to be twenty-three two four.
Except that the, the, the Youth Coalition, that got put somewhere else, so it got, that two thousand got taken out.
Okay, yes, that's, that's something we have to account for.
Where, where is that?
And then there were other.
It's on this one.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, Jason, I think I got your, uh, so the, the.
If we look at the Board of Selectmen budget, the forty-one seven seven four, that's what we, as a, as a, as a commission.
So, um, so Jason, I think your question was, where's that forty-four percent, like, how do you calculate forty-four percent? It's the Board of Finance budget, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen budget, the forty-one seven seventy-four, and the eighteen three eighty, that'll give you the forty-four percent.
Okay, so my proposal just is different than yours, so let me just get this clear. Forty-five nine seven four, forty-four percent of that is twenty-three two four. Your, your, your kind of thing you came back with feedback was the forty-one seven seven four, if we run forty-four percent of that, we'll have a little bit in, to help back.
Correct.
Okay, so let me make my, my, uh, motion according to what you're saying. Okay. I make a motion that we, uh, prorate each line item by forty-four percent, as reflected in the Board of Selectmen budget totaling forty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. So that it would give us a payout of eighteen thousand three hundred and eight dollars and fifty-six cents, with some money left over as a contingency. Would I do?
Eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-six cents, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, and what's the exact number that we left over to where it's?
Nineteen hundred forty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
Okay. Nineteen, what, one nine?
One nine four three, point four four.
Okay. Okay, so that's our motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Are any further discussion? I think we're, are we all in agreement?
Sure.
I think we are. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed, and on the record, opposed to the decision of the Board of Finance.
So we have one in opposition, and anyone in abstaining? Okay, so it's, it's five, one, and the motion carries.
And I just want to put out there that I no longer teach mathematics, I'll be teaching science next school year, so I'll leave you guys alone.
It's good, you're still a math guy, it's good.
It's good.
We need somebody like that.
All right, well, that was the most difficult thing we had on the front page tonight, okay. I hope, all right. We're now, we're now going to go into executive session, can I hear our motion to go into executive session?
Uh, I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations, local three-three-seven-seven firefighters' contract.
And we'd like to have, uh, let's see, Kevin Gervais, stay and join the executive session.
When all other people.
Everyone else.
I still leave, and this is occurring at nine forty P M.
I need a second.
My second.
Your second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Big none. All right, so we're entering executive session, so I'll have to close the doors. So we need a motion to come out of executive session.
All right, I move to come out of executive session at nine fifty-seven P M, and no formal votes were taken.
I'll second.
Okay, all, all in favors? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Big none. Motion carries, we're back on the record.
Oh, do we think it, Sandy?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We all go home in Sandy's. Where's Sandy?
Hey, we're ready.
You have that, your motion ready to read?
I'm just getting tired.
No, I know, why?
Hi, Sandy.
All right, we're back on the record, Sandy.
All right.
Do I, do I hear a, um?
All right, move to authorize the first selectman to enter into collective bargaining agreement between the town of Eastline and local three-three-seven-seven of the International Association of Firefighters for the period from July first, twenty twenty-three, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Being none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, the motion carries. I just want to, I just want to say on the record, I want to thank the negotiator, you know, the, the members of, of the fire, the fires, local three-three-three-seven, that negotiated with us in bringing this to a conclusion. I, I want to thank Kevin for your expertise, and, and Bill Bundy, and Eric Quinn, and Stacy, our, uh, what's, what's her title?
Human Resources Director.
Human Resources, yeah, Commander, yeah. And Nick Relo, our attorney, and, and, and everybody on the other side. There was a lot of trust and goodwill between both, both sides, and it, it was that trust and goodwill that allowed us to get this contract done. So I thank everybody that was involved, and Whit Halen, who was kind of the lead on the